I know, yeah. That's uh... No, because... Was it Sean? Sean. Sean.
Your brother must be a partner.
Or Sean. I mean...
I never had any... Wow, that was about me.
Yeah.
Anyway, um... So...
The door should be like a slot.
Yeah. Quite that.
It's just a call out for the... Yeah.
A fire.
Well, it's like a... Oh, shocking. So, thanks, Jody. Jody, Jody.
He's an ader. Just so we can play real fast.
Um, and they had one meeting that I know of, I was supposed to attend it. For the... Yes, and then I ended up...
And, um, Mark.
I know what that meeting was, 'cause it started going to rain. It was raining.
We'll get, I need to get you some for someone.
Yeah, not actually.
Okay. So, because, because they want that, um... And so, I don't know, we would have been able to... I've got, you know, the actual video. If that's what it's gonna be, then I'll... Maybe I'll get some guys to contact you. Okay. So, you want to get...
Do you have this person pulled this way? Pulled up, or should I have it on my...
No, I've got it.
You don't make them from their contract, you're making it right?
Yeah. Oh, no.
Are you okay?
Then I'm putting my house in charge.
I think Joel's...
Yeah.
You know me as that.
Yeah. Have you done that before? I've never done commercials. This is a little bit of fun, but I'm like... Yeah.
That's... Center Street's a building. They're either sort of... Yeah, I see them. Well, they're gonna talk about your...
Hospital's...
It's unconscious.
So, it's like... They put here. We think good...
I'm not...
I have, I have all the...
All the stuff. Jody also...
No, I think that's easy.
Or we can just...
I don't know. Yeah. Say things. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah.
There's always that.
I got it. Well, that was...
Yeah, we're trying to...
Section two. For this one. This one might be this guy's...
That's that regional. It's not like it's...
Eric. Yeah. Go here first, we're coming up next. So... Well...
I feel as being concerned. I was like, dang, I don't have any notes. That'd be come...
Well, yeah, we wouldn't do this here. But it's a little underground, we're putting up the... And then they got a call.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Always like something such as... Mission, or... Judge. We were gonna use that. We only need... They're here to... You got, you got probably a four and a half there. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Or... Yes. Four down. It's just now, taking...
That would be all I need.
All screen down. Yeah, but it was over there.
Yeah.
They're looking this way. They'll tie with this.
She's...
I didn't even notice.
I saw her for the first time.
You're clear, is it? Yeah. Yeah.
She's working on doing some of the...
No, because...
Yes. That was great.
If we ever wanted it, it should...
Thought it, no.
Yes, it's...
Yes, it'd be another camera.
I did give it off.
We give them a built-in. Yeah. Yeah.
My next...
We'll do that.
I did it.
I don't know why we got to find it.
You give them off.
Well, we...
Bump that up early, that...
Oh, really? It's dark.
What is that? You're just saying... Yeah. No.
But, no, I was like...
That's the we of all.
Yeah, it's there. It's like my heart room. They're kind of kissing.
It wasn't quite that way.
Lots of colorful stuff. Yesterday I had my bright orange jacket on, and it was like...
It's one of your favorites.
Thank you. Good. I'm sure you're... I'm sure you're... Yeah, of course.
Simple, then. Congratulations.
How did you see that?
I guess, right?
Joel said he'd have...
Here's my... Here's what I... I was like... So, I didn't mean to say...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they have it on. It's doing...
I'm a reteanist.
So, yeah. Yeah. Not even, so, yeah, they... They just actually...
Yeah.
I understand. Or wants to do it.
I think it's...
I think in the future, we may want, but it's a July, April, so... Or it's possible intentionally... Which we have a plan.
Oh, yes. We don't need more here, but... Is it in for process or... Did you help the process? Or is it... It's just a... Before we... Just for... Just for your... That's all I... That one there was definitely... It did nothing. Right. They're here, and now they know we'll be... They can... Mission back. Five million worth. We got a lot of...
It's got a filter on it. It's a chemical...
Right. Call meeting order. Let's allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Jody will do all calls. Here. Here.
Christine, here. Ma'am.
Here.
Chad.
Here.
Here.
Consent agenda four through eleven. Anybody want anything pulled?
Come on, don't pull, I think.
No. This is the last meeting, so there's gotta be one check on it. We gotta look over it. Motion. We got a motion.
Start again.
Motion, second. Questions, comments? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Twelve, public comments. Public comments are limited to two minutes per person. Please take turns at the podium and stating your name and address for public comments. Anybody want public comments? One more time, public comments. Perfect. Thirteen, review and approve purchase of sludge thickener wastewater treatment plant. Grant Gausel. What'd you do? Did you play it? Tourniquet, mute the... Tourniquet.
All right. We've talked about this a few times with the sludge thickener. We all kind of know what's going on out there with the current one we have. Um, so after... You've seen my memo there, we toured another plant, met with S C H, kind of looked at all the options we had selected, uh, the ones we went out and invented. And the one we actually are currently using, which is called P W Tech, that's the brand of all your thickener, is the one that we would like to go with. And the way that we came up with that, after analyzing all the costs, some of the other thicknesses are a little bit cheaper. Um, they came up with price a little bit because we didn't have class one div one, which means explosion proof, for where the thickener's gonna go. At first, we weren't sure where it was gonna go, so we didn't have that on some of the bids, didn't have that accounted for. So, that changed prices a little bit, made them all a little more competitive. And if you'll notice in my memo there, I wrote, uh, it gives us a better flexibility to look to P W Tech as far as long-term. Um, basically, it's got two separate thickening chambers, and it gives you a lot more flexibility as far as capacity. Any of the other options we had, they're fine for now, but in the future, if you're gonna up the capacity, you're basically having to buy a whole other machine to double your capacity, basically. So, that's a reason, one of the reasons that we decided for now and for the future, this is kind of, gives us the most flexibility as far as using it. Um, flexibility with repairs because of the dual heads on it, the dual augers. So, the price of the P W Tech is three hundred and nine thousand, and I have on here additional forty-five plus thousand in plumbing and electrical. Um, we just talked a little bit here this week about it's probably gonna be more than that. Would you feel comfortable saying?
Um, so, uh, Drowski is putting up the price that we got on plans. Uh, I think he wants to meet out there, and we thought that it would potentially be before this meeting, but I, I don't know, it's, uh, maybe seventy. I don't, we don't know how R J gets back to us for sure. But we suspect, um, some of that, that pricing, the forty-five was, um, looking at, I think we're even at different location or different kind of setup when we land on the P W Tech.
Some of the explosion-proof stuff that came into factor for more years.
So, there's some changes from that, but there, there's gonna be an installed cost, and the installed cost is, includes like changing some piping around, obviously installing the equipment itself while it's sitting there, but so it's all operational and that, the way that they can run the system is the right way.
So, another reason that this option's kind of the best fit is, so the thickener repair they're using temporarily, if we purchase the one, the same brand, the one that we have there, they're gonna let us use till this one shows up. But like the time for this one to show up is three to four months versus other ones are six plus months. Uh, in theory, hopefully that would happen, but we'd have to get a different thickener in the meantime, which would probably be ten to fourteen thousand a month rental on them. So, it's gonna end up costing more with them other options, uh, even though it's slightly cheaper on the equipment side. By the time you factor everything in, like the time to get it rental of another thickener, it ends up being more expensive actually than this option. So, at this point, we have a kind of a general plan where it's gonna go. We, we know where it's gonna go, the piping, so that's kind of figured out a little bit better. And so, it's kind of, that part's figured out. We, we basically need approval to move ahead with the thickener to get the order of it going on the actual thickener. That's what we're asking for.
Okay.
And we do have a hundred and thirty thousand roughly coming from Ovivo, and we have that fifty-two thousand, uh, retained a job through R J Drowowski.
Okay, so give me a total cost, you think. Give me, give me, I mean, you might be off fifteen, twenty thousand, but give me something.
I'd call it four...
With everything.
Four hundred thousand.
Drowski, four hundred thousand now?
Yep. And we're at a hundred, roughly.
Sean?
Hopefully a hundred and eighty on.
That's with the one where he was fifty-two on, now?
No. That's, that's just...
Oh, you're just saying... Here's my next question, now that Sean's here. Two hundred and seventy thousand in our pocket of this, because we have nothing more than contingency. The contingency's done, right?
Right.
So, we're on the hook for about two seventy...
Yep.
Two fifty to two seventy, somewhere there. We have some monies in our wastewater treatment fund. Or our sewer fund, I should say. What do you think our best side, just write a check out of there?
Well, I, I would wanna check, Lance, how much is left?
Or write, what do you mean, what, what's in that fund?
Yeah.
Or set it up on a mill.
Okay. You guys, you guys bill quarterly or...
Quarterly. Bills just went out here last week.
Okay.
Or everybody just received them this week.
So, that leave us about six hundred thousand in that cash account, a little bit more than that?
Yeah, just to hear more if we wrote it. I mean, we're not gonna have to do it now. I mean, when do you think we're gonna need to start chuck, chucking cash here for this?
Well, we wanna do the purchase order for the equipment, and I would guess it'd be invoiced right away and probably be out by next month.
Probably by next month, we'll be writing a check for it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's kind of stupid to get a loan for this, but just...
Right. I, I think six hundred, I'll double check, but I think if you guys have a balance of six hundred, you're in a pretty solid cash flow position in sewer utility.
Because I don't believe there's nothing more, correct?
There should not be.
There should not be, but I like that, should. It's fair, so...
Refresh my memory, is we got a thickener and it didn't work, or what?
Not really, we didn't have a thickener.
We, we have a thickener, but it, uh... Keeps breaking. They can't really guarantee that if they kind of rehab it, that it's gonna function the way we want it to function anyway as far as percent solids. It is...
So, why don't we sue them?
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is, so... This was part of Katie Jo's thing.
I don't know, he was here for her.
No, no. She cut this out in the project to save some money. We found this out after the fact.
The thickener she cut out?
It was the more expensive thickener, I think, was...
Well, I think the thickener idea was a goal, but the... There are different parameters, different factors for our plant. It's, it's, uh, uses ferric chloride. Uh, there are just some different things that, I don't know if they've seen in this type of thickener before, you'd say?
Right. So, the, Ovivo put this in, like, this wasn't, I don't think, a, a cost-saving truck. This was a, this, this equipment worked in a different plant. It was selected, um, by the staff to, to be the one that was here. Uh, once it was here, and because we've got lower limits from the V N R, we have additional processes that this other plant did have. This equipment isn't working and hasn't been. And the supplier, Ovivo, recognizes that it doesn't, and they actually offered to change out some plates and do some things and fix it, and we might be right back, have a discussion a year later.
Right.
And we said that to them, you're not, and they're not meeting limits where we'd rather, like to be with the percent solids that are created, and said, hey, we wanna walk away from your product, but you owe us because this thing's not working. That's where the, they're paying a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards purchase of somebody else's equipment.
It's a hundred and fifty, but they used a couple months to get that.
Pay for it mobile.
Yeah. They're making it forward right now until you're gonna need that.
So, regardless if they fixed what they had, they would have money out of their pocket to spend. And regardless, if we went with, kept with them, we would have money out of our pocket. We would have spent for blower upgrades and stuff like that that weren't sufficient. So, that's part of the reason we said this thing's never gonna hit what we needed to hit for solids. We can't keep going with it because it's, they can't even guarantee that it's gonna work the way it's supposed to work. And we are never gonna be able to hit the solids we wanted to hit for solids.
So, one, and one thing too, though, is that the Ovivo hit the specs that were written up. So, they did do nothing that they weren't supposed to, but their product isn't working beyond that, so...
And our, our requirements are higher?
Well, we'd like to have them higher.
No, no, no. So, our, our solids, we're trying to get this shipped down to Ellsworth. We're just trying to get a thicker soft, so you're hauling less water.
Yeah.
Well, this one can't get, it can get to a certain percent, three percent roughly or just under, but we can haul closer to four-ish percent. Well, it's cost prohibitive on our end. We send a three percent down there, we can send, the, the equipment will handle closer to four. The trucking equipment, but we can't even provide that with the, with the thickener that we have. The current one that we're replacing, we'll never be able to hit it. And over time, it's just gonna be cost prohibitive. We looked at the twenty-year costs, and this option over twenty years is like a third of the price. You know, when you factor in energy and...
Trucking.
Uh, trucking and operator expense with maintenance on it and everything else, so...
Did that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, ain't much we can do.
There's not much we can do, really, but Sean, back to you, I guess. I think you kind of knew about this a little bit. I think you were kind of informed slightly on this, but I would assume that it's just better off just to write a check out of that account and just be done with it.
Yeah, what, what I, we typically do or suggest we do is exactly that. As long as remaining cash, we feel comfortable with to operate the sewer utility. And then, just as a backup, we, um, have a document called a declaration of intent that if something unexpected comes that causes cash flow problems, and it does look like it would be better to do a borrowing for it, we have that option reserved for the next eighteen months. So, I would suggest we do that, and I can work with Mark and Kim on the paperwork for that, just as a backup, but to start out with, I think using those dollars should, should work.
So, the other thing we gotta keep in mind too are the water meters. Um, Grant, what do you think, what we, of what we have left? How much do you think we're looking at for...
For water meters?
Yeah, the last, please.
Uh, it'll be three hundred and fifty-ish.
That's a separate account, though. We're talking the sewer account. Because there's a water and a sewer account, they're separate. So, water meters will not be affecting the sewer account. So, I am not sure what's on the water. We borrowed all that money, we should have money for it, because we borrowed for all the meters.
Yeah. Okay.
A lot of money to do the water tower, pay, pay here and the re for here.
Yeah.
So, Kim shouldn't, well, I'm sure Kim knows about that somewhere, some along the lines of her learning with Steve about the water meters, so that should not affect that account.
Well, the thing is, we could start this, and Sean says if we run into an issue, we can always come back and look at that particular issue.
I think it'd be pretty simple to look at it.
Okay.
Well, that's that. Now, we're up to sixty million dollar sewer plan.
Hey.
Got a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve up to four hundred thousand dollars of spend towards the sludge thickener equipment and the additional plumbing and electrical necessary to get the job completed.
Wait a second, bud. Got it all, Julie? Your motion is second. Questions, comments?
Thanks for your work.
Jeremy, this is what you want, right? This is what's gonna make this thing fly and easy for you and...
That's what the village needs, yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sean, just you and Kim, or you, Kim and Mark can work on that coming up here in the next couple of weeks around it. Number fourteen, don't kill me on Butcher Ness, but I'm gonna go Daria Valiga.
Daria Valiga.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, Wisconsin Community Development Investment Group, my application, a resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five three, affirming support for and authorizing to pursue a W E D C community development investment grant.
So, um, just a little background, Daria is in the process of purchasing and rehabbing the former Masonic Lodge building at seven ninety Main Street. Extensive renovations are needed to the structure and interior. Her plans include, and she can talk about this a little more here, adding two apartments and a art gallery and some rental office space in the main level. She is in the process of applying for a hundred and four thousand dollars through the Wisconsin Economic Development, Community Development Investment Grant. This was the same program that Family Resource Center used last year. Um, she's also got bank funding committed. Um, that Wisconsin C D I G program would require the village to sponsor the application and basically apply for that grant on her behalf. There would be no liability financially to the village if funding's approved, and it has the first step. A resolution from the board is needed. Um, so, anyway, Daria, I don't know if you want to just talk a little bit about your project?
Sure. Sorry, I have a little bit of sore throat, so I apologize. I don't know what you wanna know so much about it, but, um, I've just been driving through and seeing this building ever since I lived on this side of the river, and I have almost physical desire to open up those windows upstairs. So, I just wanna build two apartment units, long-term rentals, um, art space for myself where that big window is, so that when you look from the street, it's really beautiful, which right now, it's not very beautiful, as we all know, and a couple office spaces at the bottom. And, um, I have one of my daughters who's training to be a midwife and a doula, so she would be renting one of the spaces there, for sure. So, I've, um, commitment from the bank. I'm applying for a loan to purchase and a loan to rehab, a hundred and twenty-five thousand he's giving me for that. Um, putting my house on the line, so you all know I'm serious about the projects. It's, uh, gonna be collateral for this property and for this debt. So, if you have any questions, please do ask.
Just basically the formality for her to do all the stuff that was resolution. Just like Family Resource Center.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, two seconds, whatever one you want. Questions, comments? Roll call.
That's on an absentee man?
Yes.
Yep.
Forbes, yes. Nick, Herb?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
And Jervis, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next month, there will be a development agreement that will have to be approved, and I'll have to, I'll have to work with you kind of on that, but it'll be the same thing that was done for...
Yeah, we...
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Fifteen, review and approve agenda of management software, Civic Plus. Is that you, Jody?
Um, no, I can talk, just briefly about it. So, uh, Jody and I have been looking extensively at, kind of from the top down, from the website down to agenda management, um, software to mass notification software that can be used, um, to notify residents about different things. And one, I guess, kind of conclusion I've come to now is that, you know, we're trying to obviously watch what we spend, be prudent, and the total cost of, to completely redo the website, new platform, is probably gonna be seventeen or eighteen, maybe more. So, we've kind of been better the last, I don't know how many months, with Civic Plus, and we're working with them to try to get an upgrade, um, of our current platform, but just from a cash flow standpoint, you know, I think it would be better to stick with Civic Plus. We've made some progress with the website, um, and eventually it will be redone. And the next step, though, that we do need is some type of agenda management software. Um, this is probably fifty percent less than the other quotes that I've gotten from other companies. And the other thing with this software is that it's, um, compatible with our website. So, there's elements of this that would eventually be able to make easier access to the public. I'm not gonna go through the whole presentation. You have the PowerPoint in your, um, under number fifteen. But basically, as far as the board goes, it will be similar to Dropbox. There would be an app, or I think an online access that you would go into, and you would open up the meeting, and you'll get basically the agenda, and then you just click on each item on the agenda, and that will open the attachment up. Um, and eventually, hopefully not too long, this will also be accessible to the public. Um, but what this is gonna allow us to do is more efficiently create agenda items and staff reports, But what this is going to allow us to do is more efficiently create agenda items and staff reports, be able to make. Uh, one of the biggest difficulties with Dropbox now is just how cumbersome it is when you have to delete and you have to insert new attachments, and you have to add items in, you know, say on Tuesday, we have to add an item to the agenda, we have to go through, renumber everything, make sure all the attachments are, um, you know, in order. And with this type of system, basically, and if the board had won, I could certainly set up a demo, but I couldn't really get them to give me, you know, some way to show it how it works without the salesperson doing it. So, um, basically, this is similar to my last community, we had a similar program called Brandicus, and it made the agenda management light years easier, I can't tell you. Eventually, department heads could add things to it, um, it just creates a lot easier. When you have to make amendments from setting up the agenda to all the whole process of, you know, adding items, making revisions, it's so much easier, you can change the order around in, you know, seconds, and you can renumber things, it's so much easier, so.
Good salesman.
Well, good about that. But basically, you know, um, J- Jody and I have both seen demos on this, Jody, I don't know.
Yeah, I actually like the fact that, um, it puts some responsibility back on the department heads when they're bringing their, um, forms available. There's three different levels of communication, so we can have agenda B, if there's something only we want to see within the office itself. That's what we can have one level, security, the next level is with you as board members, that we would interact with you that way. Third level would be public, who has media without immediate access to the board packets. Whatever they wanted, whatever we allow them to see would be right there, ready and available for anyone in the public to have access to at any time. And the department has a little data reports directly to that, if there's a memo they wanted you to see that went along with their memo, they can send that just directly to you, that would not be visible to the public, vice versa, you know, that kind of thing. Um, it, like you said, it's, from what we've been able to see, it looks like it's a real easy module to look at on too. There is a second half of it from the, um, minute management that we'll look at down the road. We get this one under our belt first, and maybe put that into the budget for next year. Should take a look at that, because you can take that directly off of your board packet and turn it right into, and starting with minutes, which would take a lot of time off of my plate and make that one forward a lot more efficiently, so.
Got a question. Do we pay Civic right now a yearly fee?
For our website, I believe so.
So is this an additional thing, or is this going to be?
See, here's the thing with Civic, Civic is one of the, the higher-end ones out that we have out there. Our problem is we've never accessed all these modules that go with it, we haven't done any upgrading. In the years I've been here, we've never done anything with it, we've used it as a stand, that's it. What we've been able to find out is all these things that other people have, we have access to, we just weren't picking them up when they were offered. So there are a ton of modules out there, like he's talking about mass communication, that's another module. There's all these things that are available that we have directly, and we're dealing with one of the best companies that are on the market already that we've got here. So putting these modules in instead of starting from scratch with a new company was actually more cross-purported for us to do it that way. Um, and we can just pick and choose as we go what we add to in our existing.
So for the module that you guys are requesting, it's, uh, initial in, estimate of?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hundred, and then a recurring fee of three thousand.
No, no, five percent on year two, doesn't it say that too?
With a, you have to, like, an inflationary, it's going to adjust inflation for five, uh, five percent on year two, and then auto-renewed. And so what is this, what we're requesting today, what is that replacing? Is it replacing just Dropbox?
Yeah, and Dropbox is free. We don't pay anything for that, or nothing else.
I guess a question, question for Mark or Jody, if this is a system that we can get for the village, are we only looking at doing village board minutes and agendas, or is this also available to departments and committees to do there?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And if we could set up other people to use it, um, like the library board, the planning commission, yeah, absolutely. Once we get the hang of it, that would be the way to go.
Everything can be in one spot, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, correct.
Or is it amazing?
I think a lot of this is amazing, but the ten years that I've been on here, and Dr. can probably back me up on this, we've gone through a lot of these things, which have worked out. How much are we paying a year on all these yearly fees for all the stuff that we've had for the last ten years? Because Tracy came up with some stuff, this was going to be, this is going to be so easy that it's just going to make life easy, so. Kim, is that something you can look up, what our annual fees are on all these software programs in the whole village?
Yeah, like all the subscription.
I would love to really know, I mean, I'm for this, this, it sounds like a great idea, but every six, eight, nine months, we ought, well, yep, we got a fee of this, we got an initial cost of it, then we have a yearly fee of three to four, five, five thousand. What are we spending a year on these software fees? I'm hoping that you can find that.
Question, as we look at those, would this replace any of those, that they can go away?
Right, and that's our thing, ten years ago or eight years ago, when something came up, did something dissolve and would be replaced? I mean, I guess I never asked that question.
Maybe get rid of things if we're not using them.
Right. Maybe it's, maybe it's minimal, I guess.
So we use Civic Plus or Civic for our, paying our water bills, water sewer?
Yeah, we use P S N, yeah.
So I, because I, I did a little digging on Civic, I know we use Civic, right? So I'm back.
Civic actually has their own portal.
That's what I'm saying, I'm back with Lance, and I, I would also like to know, you know, if we can go with one. If we go, if we're sticking with Civic, can we get rid of, can we go to Civic and they give us, because I know we're going to get, we're going to bundle, you get, you get so many modules, right? And I agree with Lance, we're paying this other company for another portal to pay our water bills, why don't we use Civic? I, I know that Civic is highly used with St. Clair County, right? So, again, I'm, I'm all for it, but I think we can implement different modules to save on other modules.
Yeah, that's why I think we should have, Kim can obviously dig that up, can you dig up who you send yearly subscription checks to possibly to, or?
I'm curious.
What, like, what companies we're paying?
Because in the short time I've been here, I haven't seen it come through.
Right, you're right, but maybe that's a steep question, I can help you out or something, or?
Or I just do a little bit.
In the near future somehow?
Or are they yearly, monthly, or quarterly?
I think most of them are annually, I don't think anybody really does quarterly or definitely not monthly, but it just seems that every so often this comes up, and like, ah, how much are we paying here? Because we don't see them, we just pay them and.
So Civic is a little different than Civic Plus. So like Civic is our financial software.
Understand. Understand.
Oh, yeah.
So that's different than this Civic.
We're, I don't think anybody's against this, but I think we just need to, we need to start looking at what, what we maybe can bundle and what we're spending on. So we're taking this out of your paycheck?
Yeah.
Because it's going to make your life so much easier.
Yes, yeah.
I had to get my, I had to get my cut in here. I was going to say you want this because you didn't know how to run Dropbox, but you and I had issues with Dropbox, we had issues with Dropbox.
Now we got it down.
You and I.
We have it down, that's, that's, we got Dropbox down now.
No, we don't, not having a debate, it's conversation. Well. Anyway, we have some of it though?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve this module.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Whenever you get to it, Kim, maybe, you don't have to have it for next month's meeting, maybe get it in June, whatever. We're not going to pressure you for it, but it'd be kind of nice to see what a list of that stuff in the next month or two.
Well, and you need to know that, those kind of things for budgeting.
Absolutely, you do. And maybe we're paying for some we don't even hardly use anymore either, I don't know, I mean, maybe, maybe not. Okay, seventeen, no, we're in sixteen. Review and approve EMS pay increase request for Windmill.
Yeah, she's a full-time medic, they respond to her, she came on here, she's been here six months, she's doing well. Part of the agreement was that six months she gets, because she's sent salary raise, and at the one-year mark, she'll be on fifty-seven, so.
Motion second, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, pose. Seventeen, review of approved consulting agreement with Gary Newton, retiring for the wastewater treatment plant operator.
Guess I'm with Cockton as behalf, uh, for the DNR, we have them approved, uh, advanced wastewater operator with advanced certification to sign off on monthly, quarterly, yearly, uh, reports for the DNR for the wastewater. So myself, I'm trying to get that status, I still don't know from their permit people, they haven't heard nothing yet back as far as if they're going to approve me or not. Jeremy is working on his, he just took his advanced test, uh, week or two ago, two weeks ago.
You don't really have the, the test, they're like, they need one, four, you need four years of experience.
Experience, but we're trying to work through it, see if they'll give us an, you know, make an exception for us or anything like that. Um, so meantime, Gary has to sign on our monthly reports, and his fee, he wants to charge three fifty per report signed. So that's every month, there might be, uh, one per month, there might be two, depending on what kind of reports we have to do. And I can just tell you that that's what I charged when I was in Spring Valley, uh, when I had to sign up for their stuff for about six, eight months. So that's.
Just estimate up how long we're looking at?
So technically, I have enough fixed time and whatnot, whether they approve it. Uh, Jeremy, you're supposed to have four years minimum experience, how long have you been here, one year?
Well, I have two years of experience.
Two years' experience, so it'd be a couple of years. If they don't approve me, you know, if he's the next one they have to approve, it'd be, maybe a couple of years.
When are you supposed to hear about?
Wisconsin DNR.
I turned in my permit a while, or my.
Within eight months, bud.
Within, hopefully a month or something.
A year or two.
You never know.
I'm sure, when was the last time you even talked to Wally?
He emailed us a little while ago, and he was confused, who we even had here and all that stuff, so.
Isn't that his job to know that?
Yeah, he. Honestly, he doesn't know most of the time, so.
This is a document that we can incorporate with what we paid our village engineer.
I'm sure you could, but they could do it, but it's probably going to be a little more expensive.
Well, I think, we are going to pay him expensive. Well, not signing off for Jeremiah, it's not signing off.
Uh, so it'd be, it'd be Jeremiah, huh?
Yeah.
There would be an included fee on that, on what we paid the engineers already, and it's probably going to be more than what.
Would Jeremiah have the, for eight, right? Subclasses and all that stuff for his land, right?
Good idea. It's a good question.
We can get a quote from S H or whoever else, see how much it would be at.
Call the assembly, and see who was on the DNR committee. Well, we ran this before the DNR, we called Rob Statchell, because he was on the DNR committee, because they were not going to pay for a curb in Gutter out in front of Maple Street and their property, and two weeks later, we had a check, um, so.
I made a motion to approve request of paying Gary Newton, a consultant for the village of Baldwin, sign off on our, uh, reports for three hundred and fifty dollars per report, sign until we have certified, um, advanced uh, certification for wastewater, so. That was not grammatically correct.
Jody will make it sound perfect. Got a motion?
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Oh, boy. Eighteen, discuss possible action on Windmill Days committee request. Where's Angie?
I'll tell you in a second.
She got scared?
I got a, I got a memo. So I am Chad Jamler, I am operations manager of Windmill Days, and I'm here in Angie's stead because, as she wrote it right here, she has a phobia of large, bald, barking dog. And she's very, very sick right now, so that's what's going on. Um, so, we only have a few closure changes this year, uh, the different ask would be to keep the street in front of Bailey and Sixth Street from Bailey, leaving this back service road open around the park, uh, all the way down to Baldwin Machine and Fab, allowing, um, for their driveway to be in use. We did discuss this with Chief Moore, and we did think that was a good idea. Um, it would be less confusion for everyone as far as parking and, uh, safer and less frustration for road closures, is what she said. But everything else can stay the same.
Well, you want to do this all separately, or?
I think you can do them all together, as long as you're specific enough in the motion.
Chief, you looked it over for the road closure, you're perfectly fine with this?
Yes, they came down, they talked it over with me, doesn't seem like it'll, seems like a good idea, so.
We don't want to talk about the liquor license.
So do we need to make a motion for the, the plat of road closures?
You can do it either way, if it's, if it works better, just to do individual ones, that's it.
Okay, well, keep going, keep going.
Um, liquor license, we will be adding the softball fields for Thursday night, as, as well as, uh, Cree Creek Park. We'll be hosting the kickball tournament this year.
Cree Creek Park's for like the beer garden there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Bill, it's just one day for the?
Just one day for softball.
That's the one, Thursday night?
That's it.
That's it. I didn't see where the money was, I asked for, I don't know what it is. I didn't see that, what was that, seven grand we gave? Last year? Which we do have budgeted from our tourism fund. Don't say twelve, Jesus, they'll take twelve.
No, we found us seven thousand in the past because of the increase in pricing of court parties and, you know, things like that. We are asking for a bonus beyond that seven thousand this year, only because.
Can I read what she wrote?
Yeah.
So this is from her. Uh, the reason we're asking for an increase, um, when almost all entities ask for funds, those funds go toward their members or for their club-specific needs. Uh, when we receive funds from sponsors or the village, those funds, unlike other entities, benefit the community as a whole. We use every dime to provide activities for those of all ages and socio-econ, excuse me, socioeconomics. We ensure we have enough bathrooms, we have enough shelters, et cetera. We are for the community as a whole, and there are not many entities out there that can say the same as that.
Do we know how much was budgeted?
There's twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for Windmill Days Chili Fest.
Tommy gave mine last year. Is that in the rate, do you remember? Seven. Oh, we did seven?
When was it, when'd we do it, like, out of the books?
I thought it was five and a half, seven.
Two years ago, I asked for money and you went from five to seven.
Catched it at seven?
I thought last year we passed.
We do it in April last year?
Last year we asked for seven, uh, correct, March.
I thought because last year was the hundred and fifty, that we did more.
We kept it at seven, I think last year.
Melissa's shaking her head. Seven?
I'm pretty sure we got more.
I thought we did, I thought we did, I thought we did seven.
Here it is, got it right here. March eighth of twen, oh, never mind, that was twenty-three, it was seven thousand and twenty-three. Hold on, I'm on the wrong, right?
Year.
I'm on the wrong year, so it's a year, seven, there were seven thousand. Joy Peterson requests a monetary donation when Windmill Days Van Zorven moved or approved a donation of seven thousand dollars from the tourism fund for the event, seconded by Van Damme, that was twenty-three, so let me, I'm off here.
March or April? No, that's not we went tonight. Melissa is shaking her head at me. I'm pretty positive it was more, I don't know what they're telling you, but because of the anniversary, you went a little higher. Yeah. Jason's, Jason's. No, that was paraguay, I should have said this one this year. They were, they used to be, they're not anymore. Nobody done it.
Here it is. This is from the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Windmill Days Forbes made a motion to give Windmill Days seven thousand dollars from the tourism fund, Van Zorven second, motion passed. This is in addition to the six thousand dollars budgeted last fall for the laser light show payment, also to come from tourism. During the boom, the new second approved the road closures, the mental health. So it's thirteen.
But it was, that was six, specifically for the laser.
Which they will not be returning this year.
For six thousand dollars, I would have tried to get my money back for that, my kids lie, I thought it was cool for about thirty seconds.
Yeah, and that whole process was up. Yeah, and that whole process was up. With everything.
Well, like I said, we do have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted. Still need if we get.
For three months? For Chili Fest?
Chili Fest, we don't get, we don't need to give, we don't give that much.
Not much.
It's just. I think that was just supposed to put in the budget, so if you're willing to do it, we can do thirteen thousand dollars with no laser light show. Give me some ideas, what's up? How, why is there gonna spend my money?
Um, all I can say is, this year's been a very tough year for businesses economically. We've been up against several other entities, fundraisers, you name it, we're behind. And so we either have to cut activities that are free for kiddos that may not have an experience because they can't afford the carnival, or some other idea that we don't know yet.
Motion approve thirteen thousand.
Second.
Motion second. Questions, comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Thirteen thousand. Throw the kids in there for free stuff for the kids, and I'm a sucker for that, so.
And on a side note, Lance knows that May first, she's gonna show up at your house, but we got, we got big news.
Honestly, I really put it in my phone to be up at four AM because she says she's gonna be there at five AM at my doorstep. So I'm gonna be sitting there waiting.
You all will be very happy.
Why does it have to be at five o'clock in the morning? I mean, couldn't you wait till like seven? I know, I know, it's Angie, I love her to death, but I probably deserve it, so.
So we need to make, okay, so we need, we need to make a motion on the.
Yes. Yep, you wanna do the rest of the closures all together, with the new closure.
Yeah, I would like to do a motion for the proposed road closures in our packet for Windmill Days and also the alcohol policies for the event, Beer Garden and the public games.
Second.
Motion second. Questions, comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Nineteen, review and approve beer garden permit for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five for the Austin Van Zorman benefit, Old American Legion.
Let's do it.
Second. Motion second. Questions, comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose? That's the way I wanted that one to go. Thanks, Amy. Review and approve placement of Little Free Library at Windmill Park. I don't have any bit of.
I got it, I got it.
Gee, why should it stay there?
Is this the one Claire's being had?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a.
Thank you for giving me that.
Little Free Library that's, needs a home, they would like to put it down, the library would like to put it down at the Mill Pond, down at the, I think we're gonna put it, we kind of entered it up, there's a little, I think by the park pavilion building there, kind of the bathrooms, it has the monthly, who is renting or using the space, rent underneath that, we could mount it, it's not real big, but we can mount it down there to be in a good spot where.
Where was it?
Claire Steen's house?
Oh, because this is, this is Windmill Park, like she.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So you want, they want to place it in Mill Pond Park?
Oh, that's my, 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 I don't know. We went down there and looked at it.
Where at, Mill Pond?
Where, remember, you come into the, where the pavilion is, there's a little.
Think it would get action there?
By, by the playground?
It's right next to the pavilion. Whoever's gonna sit over there, there's a little stand there that has the, they put the calendar in there, who's renting it, so if there's any, I guess it shows up.
So it's just sitting there, so Beth wanted to use it somewhere, so that was her spot she wanted to go.
Oh, so it's not Claire Steen requesting this?
No. He, he had the Little Free Library at his house, tried to put it somewhere else, or I have no idea.
We had originally.
Oh, this is the library question, this?
Yeah.
We had a very well-meaning. We have a library board that originally talked about, why isn't it now going at the food pantry? Public place, Claire didn't want it at the food pantry, and they didn't want it in his garage anymore. So I don't know from there where it went, but apparently the requested Mill Pond.
Here it is.
Because the library does, is going to maintain it. That's everything.
Motion approve.
Hold up, go ahead and go, I have thoughts, thoughts on that.
Is it about the library?
Well, the one on Fourth Avenue that, that the library is doing?
I have no idea. I don't know about those public ones, if those, people just put them, stuck them in the ground and they just.
Most of them are their private, that's the most.
Yeah.
I know, the post rodder off, somebody came and fixed it. Now I see the doors are ready to fall off.
Volunteers, whoever lives in that community, maybe, I'm not really sure.
No, this guy wasn't from our own. Our name, but anyway.
Geez, W, you're retiring tonight, the village board, you had time.
I'm a match, so.
All this stuff is open after. Yeah, I've, I've seen them all over town, or in a few places in town, I have no idea who take care of it.
They're on a registry, so if you register them, you can go on a registry and look and see where it really is.
But if they're on a personal house property, that's, that's that owner, owner of that house, or that's what most of them are in town.
Yeah, it's more likely maintained by those people. We have a motion, a second. Questions, comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Twenty-one, Baldwinville Chamber of Commerce, twenty twenty-five event approvals. A beer garden permit Midwest Market, we have to do these all separately because they're all different dates there, probably a good idea, huh?
You wanna discuss them separately and make separate motions?
Okay.
But it can be all.
Just make sure the approval is detailed in the minutes, so we have all that.
I, the only thing, question is Midwest Market, what is, what, what am I lost on that?
That's, we did this last year, we had the.
That's that recent?
Yeah, the recent.
Oh, and they just had their beard, their vendors out there, and they had a beer, beer guy out there or something like that?
Yeah, we're, we're sponsoring.
And that open lot, straight to the.
Mm-hmm. And we're, we sell kickles, so it's just beer videos and the winaritas, so.
I just forgot that was going to be a question.
Make a motion to approve twenty-one, A, B, C, D, E, F, as in our packet.
Okay, two second.
Motion second. Question, questions or comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Thank you.
Planning Commission. I'll go through this really quick. So we have a big planning commission meeting on Monday. The Pinnacle Development Group is around so over, I was talking with them actually out in the hallway there, they came up with the concept of the property between K-Tech and Dollar General. Everett's owning it right now, they're working on a deal that they can build some homes that their houses in there, they're smaller, they're smaller lots, or condensed plan. I wonder, kind of, there it is right there, that's on, there's fifty, forty-nine lots that have those fifteen acres, and you can see where the flood plain is to the north of that there. Yeah, they're, they're jam-packed in there. Now, Nate Palmer on our commission said, you know, there's nothing gonna go to the north, south, east or west of this, and if it's kind of a new concept, everybody says that the millennials want this. Maybe they do because they want no maintenance of the yard, they don't want a shovel driveway.
Plenty of people who don't want a maintenance of the yard, yeah.
True, but, so.
Also, like, elderly people don't want that.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and if we decide to go with all single family, they were more than happy to do all single family homes in there. We talked about the PUD that was on here, we decided to go against that because setting a precedent, so we have them now rezoning it to our one. Our one.
So it's currently zoned commercial, highway commercial, and in the highway commercial, you can do residential multifamily of more than four units with a PUD overlay, and that, that was added back in twenty twenty for the apartment building on Gracie Drive that was being proposed, so that could be allowed there, that was why it was changed. It wasn't changed to create residential subdivisions in commercial districts. And so, uh, the two big things that we talked about, the planning commission, or that I thought were important, at least, were the zoning and the extension of Spruce. So Spruce by the new police station by Dollar General there, and then Spruce also is by Fourth Avenue as well, it's a, I don't know, a couple hundred foot, statues and duplexes on it, and it's currently plotted out that the roads connect, go across the creek. And, um, and so we don't want to talk about, do you want to require or still maintain the ability to extend Spruce and have that connection through there? And the, the planning commission felt like they, they didn't think that it was viable because of the cost, the early year, early, it's been chatted to with that, that kind of consensus.
Yeah, the cost of putting a box cover, it's probably half a million dollars, at a bridge, be closer to a million, probably, nobody's gonna pay for that. So if we want all that traffic coming through there, turning on sixty-three, we go in front of the police station, this is gonna cause more traffic, I think, if we just keep it the way it is, dead end, as you see it here, and then dead end of where it's at, the police station, weavers and Dollar General right there, and the home leave. Unless you guys have a better idea, I think that's good, but that cost will go on to the developer. And another developer's wanting to touch that with a ten-foot pole, they're gonna lose money.
Is that a safety hazard to have homes back closed together and have only one way in and one way out of a development like that?
So one, one thing.
I'm thinking of fire.
Sure.
Right.
And in the, in the ordinance is the max length of a cul-de-sac or dead-end road is a thousand feet, and this is fourteen hundred, I had it set down before, so it would require awareness for that. We didn't really talk about that much, it was a night home.
We didn't talk about it at all.
We didn't talk more at all. But.
I think it's hard because this is just concept right now, there's no, nothing is happening. I think that when it comes back to us, that will definitely be talked about.
That will be an issue, that'll be brought up, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you know, I think where that is important is emergency services, and that's probably why the code is written that way.
We also discussed that everyone on the board would not want to live here.
So.
But there are people, but there are people that do, and it's just not.
We discussed, we discussed that part that, I don't, I wasn't a fan of this at all, it's way too compacted, but I do see a lot of this in the Twin Cities area now in the outline suburbs. We pave a lot of these areas, they, they are jam-packed, and as fast as we can pave a road in there, they're in there living. So Nate Palmer, one of our committee members, said, what else is that property gonna be used for? I mean, huh?
Farmer?
The farmer doesn't even want it anymore. His equipment's too big, get in and out of there, be ready to dump it, but what else is it gonna be used for? Dust will not go in there. You know, you got that flood plain, which is extremely huge in there, it takes away a lot of, a lot of land area to build on. If you did do, you know, a normal quarter acre lot, I don't think it's gonna be viable what the farmer wants. So it's a great use of the area, I guess, it's more tax base for the village, and you know what, maybe it's, maybe you don't wanna live there, but for some reason, I think it's not gonna take a lot of fill up, so don't live there.
What's one that part about the no driveways?
No driveways?
That's what you said earlier.
Did I say no driveways?
Yeah.
No, no, no lot lines? So they, they basically, their lot between the buildings would be what? Six feet?
Twelve feet, six hundred and fifty.
Well, that's what the ordinance reads right now, right?
The ordinance was a combined of sixteen feet, minimum of six, so it could be six and ten.
You can almost high-five your neighbor out the window.
Or South St. Paul, you'll see South St. Paul, just like that.
Hudson, Hudson, what are you doing?
Yes, yes, they'll all grab, they'll all have garages, they're, they're gonna be single families, they'll have some garage driveway, they're just really taking up, they're cutting the lots down to basically nothing, slapping a house on there, and not having hardly anything for a grass area. That's what everybody wants now, the millennials want.
They're not entertaining, they're, they're not entertaining.
So.
But you still know they're gonna have six, seven cars.
Well, that's where we have, we're gonna stop in parking.
After we go?
Yeah.
There's no motion or anything, right?
No, there, there's nothing to make, they need rezonance, we, we just said to go, they're gonna come with better plans, better concept of what they wanna put for a house on and everything. So it was just an update, we just threw it back to them to say, rezonate, instead of, we did kind of tell them, maybe the lots should be just a little bit bigger, but.
Yeah, so some of the lots, well, simply conform to the R one amp, which is a minimum of sixty foot.
Yep, and they, they had, is this concept down to fifty foot?
No, I think they had it at sixty.
They had it at sixty?
But they wanted to go down to fifty.
These lots out there are like point one, one acres. I know. We, we, huh, we just, we just said, you know what, come back, sure, we'll, we'll look into it.
One of his big points was millennials don't want to move, they wanna be able to get a lawnmower for exercise and do their yard, I'm like, I have a point two five yard and lawn mower with a push mower.
But they said it would only take ten minutes.
Okay, that's true. It takes Nick Lee in an hour, that's true.
So that's, it's just an update on that original there, so.
Interesting.
We'll find out more, probably, more likely, a couple months before we see, they think they're gonna be back by next month meeting for rezoning, and I highly doubt that's gonna happen, so.
And he called us all boomers, by the way, did you catch that?
A what?
The comp plan amendment?
Well, I think.
That's more than a month.
Yeah, they don't realize that what they're getting themselves into doing, they won't be in the ground until the summer.
You don't, you don't have to do a comp plan amendment, or.
Well, if, if that's all commercial, can you comp plan, then you do. I, I guess you can look at it and see.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is.
There's another hoop, they gotta jump through it.
And that's all doable.
Right.
That's just, you know, more notices, more.
More.
Right, okay. Um, we discussed, we have a draft for a solar ordinance, I think Paul actually has that in his office.
Yep.
So far, so good, it looks pretty decent.
You got a lot of definitions in there.
This was Mark Onkresko from the planning commission, committee.
And I'm not sure you use those terms, all the ones that you're defining in the actual ordinance.
It was just something to go, it was a starting point.
And I've seen something similar to this in other communities, there's sort of a sample that's been used around.
So we have something in the works for solar farm ordinance.
Do you want to add an ordinance to that?
Yeah, we're working, we're working on that one too. Yep.
I'll keep asking.
Mark and I are working on that one, we're working on it also, but. And then we discussed impact fees, to maybe raise them up a little bit, but it looks like Eric has to do a small little, you have to do a study, kind of, a legal study.
Yeah, so I didn't, I know a lot of stuff ended up impacting that, maybe more than I, I thought would, but sharing some stuff with Mark and sharing with you, and that's all fine. But in two thousand sixteen, we looked at it as well, but impact fees are, are, you know, not for deficiencies in funds related to pay for the impact that development has on the village, and you have to quantify that, you can't just arbitrarily pick a number and say, we feel like ours should be closer to whatever Roberts has or something, or we feel ours are too low, you have to have numbers to justify it. And we did some of that in two thousand sixteen with proposed future projects, and we're working through the infrastructure improvement plan, basically road, road construction projects, road water sewer kind of stuff, that'll help inform that as well, but likely your impact fees are low, I don't know that for sure, but just simply by the way of inflation, if last county update was two thousand sixteen, there's a chance that they should be adjusted.
So that's all we accomplished.
You may want to do that because you have a lot of lots coming online here.
Why do you think it was put on there, they're wrong?
But you gotta, they're going to try to beat you to it.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, we had all that stuff, and we didn't make a motion or second on anything, so that was what we had for a meeting on Monday. Uh, committee reports, streets and buildings. The police department, this was a very interesting meeting that I sat in on. Eric, you want to fire, start it off, maybe we'll talk with Wolf here a little bit, or Mark, or Chad? Basically- Go you're wearing on that, Matt, or Matt, and you guys can take it to-
Ready to hang onto your shorts, sitting down?
Oh my God.
So, we're looking at four point one million for renovations, that-
Hold on, that is not correct.
Well, it's a number.
Total.
Right, total.
We have three point one already.
Understand, that's without-
Renovation is about two and a half million.
Yeah, but if I'm correct, in our meeting, it was three point one.
Yeah.
Did I say four?
You said four.
It's three point one.
Okay, so we purchased the building for two point two, yeah, and we took a loan off for three point one-ish.
We got about another eight hundred thousand for the remodel.
It's three point one with the renovations and some fees. The contingency or-
Yeah, the project cost.
The project cost. So, we're looking at, to remodel this and put the additions on, what, what we, what they're looking at is going to be roughly, now, this is without going for bidding, right? And that's what they're here, they can discuss it, but just hang on to your shorts, you know, what we talked about how many months ago, or a year ago. We're talking three point one now. Now, yeah, right, number could be high, and they can explain it a little more, but that was in our committee meeting. So, the committee made some recommendations, which I can just touch base on quick, that the committee did, um, go ahead and approve that we move forward with, you know, um, the remodel of, of the half or remodel for the police station and add the garage as an amendment, and then it's in your packet with the committee meeting report, so, uh, hold off on the, uh, what numbers are meeting minutes on?
Joel, Paige, you guys want to stand, just kind of give a real quick overview of what Vance is kind of explaining here, or Paige, that's fine.
Twenty-three. Um, so-
If you're up there.
Yes.
Basically, um, we submitted our drawings to a third-party cost estimator. That estimator came back with a number about two and a half million, just under two and a half million. This number for construction, yep, just for construction. We, we think of this number as kind of a midline bid, so bids could come in better, you know, maybe up to five percent better is kind of what we would assume is better, or they could come in worse. But this, you know, is a safe spot to expect about two and a half for construction costs. And then there are about twenty-five percent additional fees that are included, or that you would want to put on top of this. That includes all the different fees, testing, that sort of thing. That's, that's not a number that you'll see on bid day, that is a number that you should have. And that would include contingency as well. That explains-
Yeah, so, just the rental, rental costs in there, guess it was about eight hundred and six thousand. Garage is seven hundred and forty-two thousand. The DNR garage addition, I think, is extremely- High and ridiculous, so the committee, I think, we are axing that immediately. And we're going to talk about, and Wolf brought this up to us too, is probably maybe talk to like a Cleary Morton Building Builder type, build them a pole shed, they want some cold storage space.
That's all they were looking for, these cold storage space up there. Imagine that's almost a half million dollar.
I, that's what I thought, I'm like, holy shit, and it was tiny.
Yeah.
And it doesn't even conform to the, I mean, if they pull up the, you know, design, it didn't even conform to the existing building.
Yeah, we're, we're assuming the contractor fees here, you know, since this would be put in the bulk of the project, would be higher than what you would get if you would go with somebody like you're saying. So, that is a recommendation that we would have, as well as to pull that piece out. And we can help with that too, the drawings and everything that go along with that, but we'll procure it elsewhere, or the specifications.
So, Sean, Paige, what was the civil work, sorry Lance?
Um, the civil work was four hundred and twenty thousand, and that was for all the, um, different site works of parking. Um, that did include-
Adding parking?
Adding, adding parking, yeah, parking and just circulation around the building.
Some of the building addition costs, some of the, the, uh, very small amount of excavation for footings is in that civil number, but it's not that much, it's not negligible, or it's negligible.
Go ahead, Lance.
So, Sean, do you have any of this estimate from Wolf in front of you at all, or whatever? So, right there, so, that DNR garage addition, we're, there's no way. The committee basically said, no, to that, we'll look into building a pole shed.
You can, tell them.
What?
It's hard to build a pole shed at that. You can call it something else, don't call it a pole shed.
All right, well, we'll call it a pole shed, we'll call it a cold storage shed for the DNR. So, what I'm looking at by that cost is one point five million, a little more than that. And we have bought eight hundred thousand already, basically borrowed.
Right.
So, we basically have the existing building renovation borrowed.
Yeah.
Right now. The committee, I, I know that PD garage addition is seven hundred and forty-two thousand. Let's do it now, or it's just going to go up, it's never going down. I hate to say it, but it's a lot of money, but we also got, go ahead, Kim.
Sean has a presentation with numbers showing you four different options, have you seen that yet?
No, is it in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're really going to want to see that?
All right, we'll just go through the committee report, I guess.
Yeah, and as far as the committee, I mean, we did, uh, we threw it out there that, yeah, we could probably wait a year, two, three for garage addition with PD, but again, um, we know how sometimes that goes, but, you know, prices are always going up. That, that garage addition is, is a part of the security of those police cars. There's evidence storage, right, or in, in, there's an armory that was attached to the garage. So, there's still some rooms that wouldn't be included in the renovation because it's in the garage. So, we just, we just made the recommendation to the board that we look at renovation and the PD garage addition. Now, there, there was some talk about taking the additional parking off, um, of, of the civil work, but it was also discussed that there, with the, with the, what I'm going to call the community center in that PD building, it would be used for more meetings, activities, and with us doing the garage addition, we're going to lose parking stalls. So, you know, it's like, where do you draw the line? I know, I know it's money, right? So, we can wait on parking, we can see, but I, I know Kevin and, Kevin and, um, you know, you've been doing a lot of meetings with the community on, you know, incident, or you know, incident management and different emergency plans, and we've had a lot of people attend those meetings. You know, we had to have one out at the county shop because there wasn't enough parking, right, I mean, so. We can, this is things to discuss, so.
If, um, if we can put something up there, or Sean's?
Yeah, so, um, are you guys, was there anything, Joel, you want to talk about besides what we've talked about?
Yep.
What, what I'm excited about, I mean, I'm sorry, I keep jumping, and I don't know what the rule card like, this one.
You, you, you're the, you're the treasurer, you control the money of the guild, who's want?
What I'm excited about is, is Sean's going to show you not just the project cost, but he's equated it to what it is per taxpayer, per hundred thousand of value. So, that kind of helps you get it in perspective, so.
Jason? Do not post, that is not the final cost that you were writing down there, I see you writing numbers down there.
Pretty good.
I don't need phone calls, this quite, this is very preliminary, very- I am, Joel, I still think Joel and Paige are wrong, I, I got bets going on here that they're off by more than five percent, but I, I'm, I'm pretty hoping to God that's true, but. Yeah, all right, my piece in on the paper guy.
So, um, as Kim just mentioned, we've, we've been working with the village, I'm putting together some impacts, but I'll, I'll share with the board too, this is on this police building, but we felt like we got to show you everything you got on the plate this year, so it's, the street projects are, are included in this as well. So, um, if we move to the next slide, who's in control, Mark's in control, okay, perfect. Just as a reminder, real, real quick on the first two slides, this is the borrowing capacity for the village. And right now, the red line is your maximum, and that's just over twenty-eight million. And before we do anything this year, you've got about eleven point five outstanding. So, the blue bars are your existing debt, the red line is what the state maximum is. So, we've got some room there, uh, so the, the next slide then. This one is just to give the board an update again on the payments on the existing debt that you've already issued. Not, not just related to this facility from last year, but all of the debt. And this is net of the expected continual, uh, lease payment on the, the building that you guys, uh, purchased and talking about renovating. So, for this year, twenty twenty-five, the levy's about five hundred and seventy, and the mill rate was a dollar seven per thousand value. Okay, all right, so we go to the next page. Before we get into the options that Wolf has put together you, for you, within the total borrowing for this year, the expectation was that we needed to finance the Ninth Oak and Maple Street projects, which I believe you guys have approved at this point and are ongoing. So, this would all be financed together, it's about one point nine million, and some of it will be paid by the utilities, the water, and the sewer, but the streets portion, so the one million, two fifty-seven, that'll be part of what will have to be levied for going forward, okay? You also have a small note, uh, this is really not impactful overall, but in the total financing, because it saves some money to refinance it, we're expecting to group that in, okay? All right, now, Mark, we go to the next slide.
Hold on, go back, go back to there real quick. The current twenty twenty-five capital projects, that one point nine, what's that?
That, uh-
Street projects. So, that's, because one of the bits coming in one point five with all the other costs will be one point nine?
Yeah. Yep, yep, that's the number we use, Lance.
That's the number you use, okay, got you. Okay, I'm good.
Good. All right, now, uh, Kim referenced four scenarios. So, we ran four scenarios. The numbers I just talked about, the street projects that Lance talked about, those are the same in all four scenarios. That small refinancing I talked about, that's the same in all four scenarios. What's different is what we called, we're calling it the police building for the purposes of simplicity here, but it's the DNR and the, uh, police, uh, facility together. So, scenario one is the full building, uh, full building build-out, and it would require an additional two point two five million in costs, and that's net of the eight hundred thousand that you already borrowed. Why is it that number? It also includes budgets for the soft costs associated with the project, so we've got those in there. Option number two, or scenario two, we, we do the DNR garage, we do the full building, or the, yeah, full build, the, the normal building remodeling, but we don't do the police garage addition. Scenario three, which is the lowest, four hundred and thirteen thousand, in that case, we don't do either of the garages. We're just remodeling, and we're doing the, I think, the civil work as well. And then scenario four was no DNR garage addition, but it would have the police addition and the remodeling of the facility, okay? So, those were the four that we looked at. And as I mentioned, all of those, the numbers you're seeing there, the two point two, one million, one thirty-six, four thirteen, one million, five forty-five, those are net of the eight hundred thousand that we borrowed for last year as part of the original borrowing for the, for the facility. Okay? And the final bullet on that one, uh, Mark, if you could scroll up just a little bit, just to reiterate, in all these options, we're assuming that the lease payment is two sixteen, because we're, we're counting that in with the idea that you're using that lease payment to reduce what you have to levy to pay the debt back. Okay, so in all these options, that's how those dollars are going to be used. If the board was saying, no, we want to lease, or levy for the whole thing, and that two sixteen's going to go, be used for something else in your budget, we'd have to make a change, but for these projections, we're assuming it's used that way. Okay? All right, so let's, let's look at the options. This is, what, what I'm going to try to get to is what Kim talked to about the tax impact, which I imagine is the most meaningful. This issue, if you just scroll it up a titch more, uh, on there, Mark, perfect, is about four million, six thirty-five to finance the streets, and then all of, again, all of the facility projects and all, with all the costs that Wolf had mentioned. Uh, so you can see that would be an issue of four million, six thirty-five, and repayment schedule over twenty years. Okay, if we go to the next one, Mark? This is the impact of adding that debt to the existing debt. So, the levy would go from the five oh seven to eight twenty, and the mill rate would go from a dollar seven to a dollar fifty for equalized mill rates, okay? All right, so we go to the next one, and I'll go through these quickly. It's, in this case, the second scenario, the all the street projects, the small refunding, and then, uh, no police department garage, so this would be the remodeling, and it would be the DNR garage. So, an additional one million, one thirty-six. So, instead of a four point six million, this option would be three point five. And if we go to the next slide, you can see the equalized mill rate difference. Instead of, in the one, almost one fifty, uh, one thirty-seven, from one, one dollar and seven cents to one dollar and thirty-seven cents. Okay? All right, uh, next option was the smallest option, because this one was just the remodeling of the building, not the two garages included in this one at all. So, a smaller financing of about two point seven million. And if we go to the next page, blue is the existing debt of the village, green is the new debt. So, we go to about a dollar twenty-six per thousand dollars of value, and the debt levy goes from five hundred thousand to about six hundred and seventy-one thousand next year. And then you see over time, it gradually falls. Okay? And scenario four is, uh, this one we added late today. This one, we would do the police garage, we would do the, the remodeling of the building, but no DNR garage in this option. So, it's about just under four million, it's the second largest of the four scenarios, the four options. Three point nine million, and if you go to the next slide, Mark? Uh, the mill rate going from a dollar seven to a dollar forty-three. So, that, that is the different impact from the door, the, the four different scenarios. Now, let's go to the impact, uh, in a second here, that we would, would look at different values of properties in the village, so more of a direct impact on, on, on taxes. Uh, one more slide, if you go to this, we did do this one to give you a sense. This slide is really the same as the scenario number one slide, except what we do here is we break it into how each of the components are impacting that rise in the debt levy. So, you've got, um, the scenario three option- So you've got, um, the scenario three option, which is, so it's mostly the base project plus the, uh, the, the police department garage. The blue is adding the, uh, the DNR garage, I think. And, and so that's how it's adding and stacking up to that total. So you, and it just corresponds exactly with the cost of those projects. And so you can kind of see which, which ones are, are driving that increase, uh, in the debt levy. Okay? So if we go to the next one then, I think we can focus in more specifically, give you a sense on the uh, tax impact. And we did this on, uh, assessed value. Now I will say for you guys, you know, you, you have your equalized value and you have your assessed value. We talked a little with Mark and Kim a little bit, uh, assessed value is what people see on their tax bill. So we wanted to use that number here. But you guys are getting pretty far off of your equalized to assessed. I think your assessed value is now at 70% about of your equalized value. And so I imagine the state's starting to talk to you about doing a reassessment. And I, I don't know if that's already in the mix, Mark, or something here. Uh, but at some point, when you do do that reassessment, what happens is the assessed value comes up to the equalized value. And if you were doing that this year, these numbers could get highly skewed by that fact that that was, uh, occurring. These numbers also assume that there is no growth in the village. So I think they're a little conservative on that front. So they're saying that the assessed value of the village as of January 1, 24, which is a little bit over 400 million, is the same assessed value on January 1 of 2025. Uh, and I don't know exactly, you guys probably get that number in around June, I think, for the, uh, uh, for the, the work and do it, the assessor. Okay, so with that as background assumptions, the scenario, yeah, in, in the orangish color, I'm just gonna pick a, a value of, um, 250,000. So 250,000 value taxes in 2024 for '25. So this current year, about 2,100 in total for the village. If we do the largest scenario, we're projecting that to go from 2,100 to about, uh, 2277 or about a hundred and fifty-four dollar increase. Again, that would be on a $250,000 valued, assessed valued property. Now if we go across, I would go over to scenario four next uh, because that is the one that, uh, is next in line in terms of size. That's the, the facility and the police garage, but no DNR garage. Uh, $250,000, we're projecting an increase of about $117 from the previous year, uh, with that. And then if we don't do the police garage, but we do the DNR garage, that's the blue option, that's about $97 on a 250 dollar, 250,000 dollar property. And then finally, if we don't do either of the garages, that is about a $62 increase from 2025 this year to 2026. So any questions on, on that? We worked with, with Kim and Mark and kind of breaking these down. Uh, these can be updated once you know more about the final cost, but we wanted to give the, the board some at least initial numbers so you could kind of see what we're looking at, uh, with adding the, again, just a reminder, the street projects and the police. This is all together. It's not, we're not talking just the, the police facility, uh, remodeling and the garages and, and these numbers.
Paul, can you get me $400,000 a year for the DNR?
Well. I will say that.
I mean, does that help a remodel? So obviously we're gonna take some money away or some space away from the DNR.
Yep, so that number's gonna change.
That number's gonna change and what he has for numbers, a lot lower than what we're getting right now. But remodeling, does that help?
Well.
And to theirs, to what they want?
To what they want helps. And going back to the garage, I think they will look at rent for that garage as new construction and base it on the value and the cost with a legitimate return for the owner on that component. Just like you were building a new building for them. So the rent is probably be different for that garage than for the rest on a first square foot basis. But that being said, it's still been 400 and some thousand for that garage aside.
I, I think that's the committee basically, you guys asked that, right? I'm thinking it'll, that. Even Wold said that's, that's kind of ridiculous. I, I mean, I think we can look into not a pole shed, but a cold storage shed of some sorts for a lot better. I mean, they, they're looking for a thousand square feet, correct? And I, Kevin, thousand square feet roughly?
Yep.
So.
They, they have or do not have that big?
They, they don't, they would like to have a thousand square foot. What's, what's a, if you did a cold storage shed for, I think it's for vehicles basically, what would you go by a 30 by 50? Is that more than a thousand square foot for that? Is 30 by 50?
This is the 28 by 38.
Is it, what was it, it was 28 by 38?
Yep.
It's pretty limited by the site boundaries and the presence of the existing overhead door and so on. You can't get much more than that.
Well, what they have now there for cold storage is a pretty basic building on there. It looks like a pole shed.
Yeah, a pole shed.
I think the existing building is a pre-engineered metal building and that's essentially what we priced up here. So going, if it would be allowable, a post-rain building would be more affordable to build.
Is this cold source for the stipulation for the lease renegotiation?
Well, they, yeah, I mean, I guess Kevin, you said it, while you said it with those meetings too with Lance and Shannon.
Yeah, they, they, this is something they're expecting because they're going from the whole building to half the building and they just need a smaller, they need a smaller area to store some of the stuff that's in the current building.
I agree with that, but.
Are they?
I mean, why would they take stuff and put it, I mean.
Are we taking over half that building?
No.
No.
The office building, not the back shed building is what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Take about half of it.
You want half now?
No, we don't.
Of the, of the, let's say the remodel, we'll call it the remodel. You're not taking half of that over?
No.
No.
Not quite.
It's like a third.
Plan up here if you wanna work at it.
Probably add on to that order there, but it's, yeah.
And I think.
The committee asked, we, we brought that up too. So for the rest of the board members, we don't even have a signed agreement yet. And I, I asked, you know, I asked the question, uh, you know, is, if this is a stipulation or if they don't get this, are they not going to re-lease? I was told that technically they have nowhere to go. So, you know, if they pull out then, because we don't give them a 20 by 38 shed or cold storage, I don't.
But that will sure help in negotiations.
Yeah. They want that shed. They've always told me that they're paying for that rim based on reasonable cost of building. And we can help.
So everything in the blue there, that would be the police.
Yep.
And everything in the white to the right of that would be the DNR. So it looks like about a third, but we'd take over.
And then the DNR also gets access to the community spaces, correct?
Yeah, and the light blues and shant spaces.
So technically, I mean.
It would be shared rim or a cold room.
Right.
Right.
So.
I mean, you kind of want to cater home, but I.
So we do a re-quote of the whole building then?
Yeah, well, I think we should.
Storage shed cost anywhere from Google says 15 to 40 dollars per square foot. If we're looking at 1,064 square feet in a 28 by 38 shed, you're looking at, at most, what is that? $40,000. High end.
There's gotta be some work to do with that.
Of course.
Concrete there, there's.
I get it, but it's not 400,000.
I mean, what's, what's a basic two-stall garage? Let's go, let's say a three-stall garage, we go 30 feet deep, 50 foot wide. Forty. Probably more than a thousand square feet, but, you know, I, I guess what's a basic pole shed? That people, are they not basic anymore? Is everybody just got them off the wall, I mean?
I can speak to that. So, uh, one of my coworkers built, uh, 50 by 70, I believe, or 40 by 70 and with concrete inside, no insulation, nothing like that, just under 100,000. Probably 80 or something.
That was built?
Yeah.
Put up without concrete?
With, no, with concrete.
Other concrete, no insulation?
I suppose they wanted it cold, no, it's cold source, they don't care about it being heated.
A three-stall garage can vary between $20,000 and $50,000, but that's the actual garage, not, not the landwork, not the category.
Take up a half million, yeah. Let's say it just takes, let's say 150,000 for that cold storage. And then obviously Paul can negotiate whatever the end up square footage is on it too.
Yeah.
I mean, well, it was just easier to build a 2,000 square foot one and you guys can have it and use it and rent it and put over where you want in there. I'm sure they will.
Do you have the space for that? Do you have the space for that? When you were saying a 28 by 38 is what fits, is that because you're putting it off of what's already there?
Yes.
And we need a variance.
It's tight, we need a variance.
And there, there is a variance needed because we're right up against the property line.
Versus, I did ask the question, can we come back to the drawing board? And, you know, go back to the drawing board, get some of this, get the PD established, come back and maybe look at building that shed to the, back toward the building itself. You know, back to the west or extending it to the south. But I, then, then Kevin and Wold said there was some drive-through garages and some other stuff that makes that, that, that existing building a different arrangement, so it's screw up their, how they're using that building. But again, you know, I don't know, I didn't, my, my take was that the extension that they were proposing, I don't know, wasn't a good, you know.
You get, you have a picture of the extension on that back garage anywhere?
Uh, in his presentation?
Site plan? I don't think it was.
I know they wanted the ability to, to drive through.
Yeah.
That was one of their concerns.
And that's what they do now.
Yeah.
You don't have it on there yet? It wasn't very big looking. Not like an old house, but it.
You know, and I don't, I don't know what they wanted, you know. Mark's saying they want to store stuff that's in the existing building. Well, that's not vehicles and stuff.
Are those bolts in there?
No.
They will, what's in the current shed is bolted on?
No, no, I'm talking, Mark was saying they want to take what was in the existing office building. Some of it, that's what Shannon said.
This is my big question for Wold, is there a way to make the, uh, DNR building have a lean-to going to the south toward the road to make that parking lot bigger that way? Or is that not a possibility? Or more, more or less a lean-to.
Overhead doors.
Off of it, going to the south, I have no idea if that's functioning.
Yeah.
Yeah. From, from that cold, existing cold storage building, are you saying?
Right, so you'd be going south towards the road with some sort of lean-to structure or whatever to add under that building, making the parking lot go towards the road and figure maybe that's not possible.
I think we were already planning on making the parking lot bigger in that direction. The most affordable approach is gonna be standalone, even disconnect it from the building from what they're, uh, cause what, what's shown in the drawings, what the DNR requested. Location, size, everything. But the more, there's some complexity in tying it to the existing building. There's a door between the two buildings and other things.
But there's no way we can give enough lease money to say that was kosher to put a half million dollar, thousand square foot piece in the building?
Well, you're, we're gonna give them a price and they'll say, well, that's outrageous.
It should be that one, Mark. Just gotta scroll.
Well, the pictures are the cross marks.
No, it's in that presentation right there that you have up.
Okay.
There you go.
Right here?
Uh, there's another one, wasn't there?
I thought there was, two of them, but there was an aerial one too, there's an aerial, but I don't, I didn't put that in. There was.
I think at our meeting, I pulled it up.
Oh, yeah, you showed us on your computer, yeah, that's right.
Sorry.
It's not for this.
No, yeah, you're right.
We can certainly, like we offered, like we've mentioned, we can certainly help the, um, the village go out to bid on just that standalone package, so you're not getting a general contractor markup on that DNR garage. You can get a real price and then you can negotiate with them whether they think that price is what they want to pay for that space or not. We could do that pretty quickly, let's say.
Bless you. Yeah, we should, well, I guess, what's the board thinking about doing the, the garage and the addition at least without that 472,000, 1,000 square foot deal and then look into?
You know, if, if the cost for that new garage is reasonable, the rim should pay for the debt service.
Right, that's agreed in the past way.
Plus, we don't need to have them in writing to sign it too, right?
The problem is we need to build it first. That's the, that's the, that's what I had a deal with for the last year.
I think it's back.
They, they're paying, I mean, they are paying rent, you know?
They're paying for what they've been waiting for.
Right.
Is, is a timeline and what it's gonna look like. And we're darn close to getting that now.
Yep.
So, you know, finalizing the lease can start here pretty quick because, you know, back when we started, we didn't know if it was gonna be built this summer or next summer or last summer or what.
But the committee basically said to go forward with the remodel, the six-stall garage, the PD. No more than 1,000, that DNR cold storage, other than maybe looking into a pole shed. I'm just gonna say it. Why is it a pole shed?
I don't think the committee is turning down the DNR building or the addition. We just think that that cost was outrageous and we can, we can look at something maybe better suited for them.
That, that, you're right, that cold storage.
Because I don't want them to hold us up on the PD side.
And, or the DNR side, I don't know.
Or, exactly, no, that's on the PD. Right, right.
Well, and then include the requirement that the lease is covering the entire model of that building.
The garages are alternates in the bid, so then you could look at them separately.
Yeah, and then we can give the proposal.
And these aren't final numbers either, what we see in front of us, they're not final numbers.
But that leaves, that leaves nothing for this building renovation.
And that just might not be put on hold, I.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like this is gonna be a very major dent, you know, remodel, I guess. I mean, unless you have other ideas. I mean, the PD's pretty small, but.
Yeah.
You know, in the meantime, what were we gonna do with it, I guess? Was there a plan? I mean, library said they wanted to maybe put some meeting rooms in there possibly, but they can still work with it.
Mark and Jody and I met with Beth as well and there is potential looking forward concept of addition to the building and flip-flopping library to this side and administrative to that side. That'll obviously be a while because we have all of this to be at first. But it.
You better tell Beth to start fundraising.
Yeah, table, table, table.
Oh, yeah.
A lot.
I mean, it will be a while, everyone understands that, but it's, if forward-looking longer range plans of changing to a couple meetings, you know.
So what do we, what do we have to do on this tonight?
Nothing. Nothing, just as, you know, basically the gracious, just to basically say.
Think about it, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're still going, they're gonna bid it, right?
Yeah, so we're not holding up anything, we're not even playing.
Just trying to get an idea of what the board wants to do with it though too. I mean, the committee has basically said.
I like the idea though, I like the idea of moving forward with the, obviously for the remodel, um, police department garage and then, uh, looking into what our options are for, uh, building something that's suitable for the DNR that's cost-effective and covered by lease. Is it potentially that the DNR needs to be consulted in that if they are in the same for that part of the addition?
Well, they've been in part of all these buildings.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what, that's what. So is this what they want, is this 400,000 dollar building or we don't?
They just want a thousand square foot, they don't know the price on that.
Okay, they don't.
They just want a thousand square feet of cold storage space.
Well, sure, so it doesn't mean that it doesn't.
I'm sure they'd take a little bit more, but like Paul said, they're gonna see this and they're just like, that's outrageous.
So they'll, they'll pay for that. They'll, they'll pay for that.
Right, but they don't need it to be the four hundred thousand dollar, it can be done.
Can't imagine they do. I mean, I don't know what they're going to put in.
On page, I mean, I, I don't know if there's other concepts that we can come up with, either to save money or make that space more usable, without putting that little box addition on that side, I don't know, right, I mean, I know we've talked about other things, too, but.
Yeah, I think Joel mentioned doing a standalone would be less expensive, um, and then also, you know, we can absolutely put something together, get it out to contractors, just that piece of it, and get potential prices for that, we can do that, you know, I'd say probably every month or so, so that you guys can see what that is.
And that would be helpful to base the lease rate.
Yeah. So we can take that piece out of it, and just proceed with the, the building, and then do that piece separate, come back, and present the numbers on that one, if you'd like.
Great idea.
Yep.
Rest of the board?
I like it. Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
Kevin? Don't tell me they don't have no more funds, again, yes, Kevin?
Just a thought, it, because you never know what the, the future holds, if they do the standalone quote, and the D N R decides to go somewhere else five years from now, now you have a standalone building you could rent to one person, and the other half of the police department, somebody else, and you're not, all, all your investments not tied to one thing.
It's wishful thinking until Graham goes, you know, that's more equivalent, I need another chance.
We have more smart cars.
Yes, Graham?
So we talked about the bid alternate, or these options, is this something you could do a bid alternate on? The contractor comes back, says, yeah, we can do this for a hundred thousand dollars, is that something you can do or not? We talked about it a little bit in that meeting.
Yeah.
Is that an option, or is that not?
That is an option, yes.
You, I mean, you guys said that you've talked to whoever they felt that that price was, third-party, whatever, uh, person that devaluated it. Does that necessarily mean that a contractor would say that's what it's going to cost, or not necessarily?
The way our estimator looked at it is it was part of a larger project, so there'd be a job soup and a construction trailer on site, and part of that overhead would be going towards that D N R garage. And we also designed it as a pre-engineered metal building, much like the existing garage it's getting added on to, and so uh, if we were to bid it out separate, you know, the pole shed contractors, post-framing builders are very efficient, they don't have that sort of overhead, so that would cut a lot of that cost out. Separating it from the rest of the building cuts some costs out. It's, the challenge of separating it is, I think the site's really tight, and it's not really a great spot to, to put it.
We're going to make it work.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a great deal for the village, just because of the fact that they have, D N Rs paying as much as they are, otherwise this wouldn't even, you wouldn't be here, and we won't be talking about it right now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll have to figure out setbacks and all that fun stuff, and I'll go in on my hands and knees and plead to the variance board, I guess, to get a variance, but we need one, so we'll see what happens, but maybe we'll have Christine go in there. All right, yeah, so that's what's going on with that, Matt, you want to keep going on the other streets building here?
I think we're on four.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate you coming in. Sean will definitely be in a lot of contact here soon.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Uh, four, Graham brought up the food pantry parking lot, which is something we want to do this year, uh, blacktop concrete. The committee would like to hold off some time, just due to the size of the tanks that were in there, to let, those tanks were removed late last fall, so we should let that settle another year. There, they, we, uh, committee did recommend that, um, they do a little, there's some sidewalk that's bad, they fixed the sidewalk and it's gotten better, so, but otherwise, that was just a recommendation heard, uh, we talked about that.
And Matt, I think that was also that we could tie that concrete in with the parking lot project, the rest of the street project next year, the concrete guys be there, saying, well, you're also going to do this little spot here, and we'll figure it out, I think we'll get a better price on it, because it's just one big thing, you know?
That makes sense.
And then, uh, five, uh, we talked about continuing, um, the crosswalk, lighting. There was a couple codes in your packet, one was almost ninety thousand, one was forty thousand. Uh, we did, we did, uh, committee did recommend that, uh, we bought, we already bought the lights for Franklin in Tenth Avenue.
Yep.
Um, it's four thousand dollars to get those installed, so we recommended go ahead with that, um, and then Graham is still, we looked into upgrading the existing signals, uh, that was weighed out, that was part of that ninety thousand, so the committee did have Graham go back, or, and, and get some more, start some more, um, costs on some lower, I, I'd, I'd taken some pictures in other communities of some, looked like some, not, different configurations, so Graham was going to go back and get some dollars on that, because I don't think we have ninety thousand for crosswalk, right, so.
But to put up, um, just standalone, that was like eighteen thousand, including materials.
Yep.
Per location.
Yeah, and, and that was, that was the, the heavier duty ones.
Yep.
And when I see, as I seen some of those other ones in the other community, like in Richmond, you know, if we can put those up, they looked, and you're going to get some numbers for another committee, so.
Yep.
Um, and then, I don't know if you've noticed, but the speed limit did change up there on Tenth Avenue, and up there by the hill there, so.
Everybody's in the list.
Yeah.
I was behind somebody that, they pulled away from me.
And then, uh, so, yeah, that was, that was it for our committee.
Did the committee recommend moving ahead with, uh, the ones that were already purchased?
We, or not future reference. The ones that were already purchased.
Yeah, the ones to install.
Yep. Yeah, Franklin and Tenth, yeah. Because we've already purchased all this.
Yep.
We just had to do the installation.
Yeah, that's already, it doesn't even.
Or you sent me all the downed truffles and everything, that one's ready to rock.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, Matt?
Yeah.
Eric?
Um, a lot of the different reviews that we did, um, just kind of started back up that infrastructure improvement plan, um, haven't done much within the past couple months, we met with Brad and Herb, sorry, Brandon and Craig, uh, last Friday, and got our list, and, um, we need to get going on that here, so we can count those numbers, too, but it's kind of getting rolling on it. That's about it.
Big things coming up in the planning commission, it looks like, possibly on the road, so.
Yeah, any questions? Uh, we did talk about comp plan a little bit, uh, with Scott and Paul before the meeting, and we mentioned on the board, um, that economic for the regional development group in Eau Claire, but also St. Craig County, the county actually helps communities within county, uh, do comp plans, too.
They're helping North Hudson right now, and they, they get a lot of the towns, and they, they got the system down to do a, a pretty reasonable price.
Yeah, so it could be a good cost-effective way to do it, too, because they're not, they're not cheap, company.
Graham, you want to talk again for the fifth or sixth time today?
Sure.
Come on up.
Sure can.
All right, just a little updates here, so the utility shed that we took from the food pantry, you know, the quick trip, we're just about done rehabbing that, put up at the dump site for Cal Hop, our current attendant, uh, just upgrading it, because the shed was free, and what's out there is, uh, Cal can barely stand up in it, because it's an old, like, cattle trailer looking thing. We opened up the dump this past weekend, the compost brush area, Saturday's eight to noon, first day was Saturday, April fifth, and now Cal decided it'll be open on Tuesday nights, four to seven. Uh, stop construction, crushed our concrete and blacktop pile. That material is going to be used in our street project for the base course for the road, and some of the stuff we have, uh, the previous stuff is for, will be for driveways, and what, same thing, would be road base and, uh, driveways. Uh, we're going to spray patching puddles when the weather allows, needs to be a little bit warmer for it to function, our machine. Uh, we continue to trim branches and boulevard trees throughout the village, they did start tree removal for the twenty twenty-five street project, and we hope to be having a pre-construction meeting April twenty-second, I think it's the tentative, but we'll see. If that works for everybody, uh, we met with Hydrocor, talked about the water meter replacement project that begins April fourteenth, it should last roughly a month. So that'll be the remainder of the, uh, water meters we have in South Grove Town, should be roughly seven hundred meters. Uh, Rich Croxton's been sweeping the streets when the weather allows, uh, the street sweeper. Jeremy and myself toured another sewer plant with that P W Tech, uh, volume thickener over in Osseo. They have a brand-new plant that they're just about to start, so we went and got eyes on it, and, uh, just talked about, they haven't started using it yet, but just good information of why they decided, what they decided to go with, and what they're doing with it. And then Gary Newton and Jeremy both went to the rural water, uh, convention in Green Bay. Uh, so that's a kind of a week-long, four-day-long convention, Germany for two days, Gary went all, the whole week, and they brought back some good information from that, as far as water, sewer, their vendors, contacts, I know for Jeremy it was really helpful to be able to talk to people about sewer plant stuff. And one more update I don't have on there is, April fourteenth, the, uh, project on sixty-three for that bridge replacement, the bypass will start uh, at the fourteenth, when they're starting their work, so it'll be a little bit hectic till they get their bypass road in, and then it should be, uh, hopefully smooth sailing. That's all I got.
Thanks. Kevin?
All right, so I kind of put together, uh, just to start on the report, um, the last three years as a comparison, just based on our case numbers, calls for service, traffic stops, um, between the January and March thirtieth, roughly, um, just to kind of give you an idea where we're at, and how we're kind of changing how we pull like a case number or a call for service, uh, so that gives you a little bit of an idea. Um, hopefully it's for efficiency purposes and tracking purposes. Just some personnel updates, um, we're going to be hiring a part-time officer, Sean Van Summer, and he's going to be attending, we're going to sponsor him to the recruit school, which will start in the end of May, and will run until, uh, October, midway through October, roughly. At that point, hopefully, um, we'll be able to, uh, let him fill a position, um, here with the department. Let's see, alcohol and tobacco compliance checks, uh, we're in the process here, um, we've started a team where we're going to go around and make sure we're checking the businesses, and they're complying with our local ordinances, and also the state statutes. Um, just, you know, kind of work together, uh, with the community and those local partners, um, we have sent out a letter in the mail informing them that we will be doing randomized checks, um, this is in collaboration, uh, with Jody, municipal clerk, um, so we can just make sure everything's, uh, in row and in order, and that we're all on the same page when it comes to alcohol and tobacco. Um, so beyond that, I, I kind of went through, it's just kind of a rough base, it gives you, if you scroll down a little bit, Mark, gives you an idea of kind of our fleet and where we're at right now, uh, and it's kind of, uh, just a recommended or a rough, rough base. Um, but tech, right now, we, we have about seven squads, um, that we have, and one right now is waiting, it's in our P D garage, and it's, it'll be ready hopefully by May, May timeframe. Um, the Durangos are working, uh, working great, um, they're good vehicles, dependable vehicles, um, getting good reviews from my patrol officers on those. And, um, if you kind of go down, you can see there's a gap between them, a little bit, uh, so we have the second portion, five through six, that's the older half of our fleet. Those are, um, a little bit higher miles, and just kind of putting together a rough estimate, maybe the next three years of things to consider would just be the replacement of basically those three squad cars. Going down below, we've, we've looked at everything a little bit, there's a, just a little note, uh, even E Vs, so we're, we're trying to figure out what we can do in that aspect, so we can bring it to you with a, a good plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Tom?
Month report, one hundred and forty-one calls for service, and March of those forty were transfers, the transfers have been staying pretty steady, which is good. We heard back from Ford, that buyback from Medicaid fifty-six. They said that Wisconsin has a three-year lemon law, so they wouldn't do anything for us, they wouldn't cover some of the costs at the dealerships, they wouldn't give us a coupon or a discount on a new Ford, or something, they'll help us out anyway, so, sort of done with Ford. Almost been a nightmare working on their, that twenty twenty-four Explorer for the last few years, we've got no help from Ford, corporate, Ford dealerships have, you know, we reached out to L McHenry to see what to do now, and, you know, they don't, they're out of options, too. So starting to flash some more error codes, so we're waiting to get those diagnosed and see what's wrong with that, so the ambulance we had on order was originally a Ford chassis, I called them, Everest, and they're going to swap it out to probably a Dodge chassis, they're looking at stuff, so it shouldn't change the cost much, but I know Durangos have been around, so probably look at replacing fifty-six here at some point with a Durangle. Get away from Ford, like I said, it's just, it's not working, it's been a nightmare. Dwayne Jardines came back and did some more leadership training with us, and P D, he came back, gave us a free session. He quickly learned, I think, doing leadership training with a bunch of small first responders, a little different than corporate America. With the training, he came back, ordered, actually really good, the staff really liked him, he figured out what the differences are, and geared right towards us, and I think it was very beneficial.
It was.
Everybody agreed with that, so, that was nice of him to come back, give us a free session, when you realize the differences. The portal's open for the Medicaid reimbursement, um, I'm working with the M S M C, our billing company, to get some reports. We're working with Kim here to get some more information, it's very detail-oriented, like, year twenty twenty-three, any Medicaid transport we did, I got pulled off the wages for that duration of the transport, so the transport was a half hour, I got to figure out the crew, figure out how much we paid the wages for that half-hour transport, so it's going to take some time to muddle through this, for the next two, two twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, so hopefully we get money back on this, I don't know what it will look like when we get it back, so. Last thing is, we had special training in March, we opened it up to law enforcement, we had some K nine handlers from local agencies come. We had a group called O P K nine, they're out of the east side of Wisconsin, one of their main instructors' daughters is on our service, so it was really easy to get some free training. But they came out, um, it was geared strictly towards police K nines, and what happens is they get shot, stabbed, heat exhaustion, hurt, how to handle them, how to treat them, how to muzzle them safely, how to work with the handlers. It was very good training, hands-on, they had dogs there, so we got to practice bandaging dogs, restraining dogs, the whole nine yards. And so now we're working on St. Craig County, and those guys are really happy, we got plans, if we have to take a police K nine, where we're going with them, obviously, W W H doesn't want us to bring a police dog in. So, and we'll be going to the U of M, so we already contacted them, got contact information, so hopefully we don't have to do that, but they're becoming a lot more common, so it'll be good training, it's fairly helpful, officers and their dogs get injured, so, that's about it.
Thanks, Tom. Amy?
All right, uh, Rita sent her.
Beth.
I'm sorry, my goodness, I'm sorry.
You're on library board.
President, apparently.
You're the chair, you're the chair up there.
Apparently, I'm the president, yeah. So Beth sent her, uh, the first few things I talked about in March, so we're going to go down to family activities. Storytime is back up on the second Thursday of the month, along with family art time starting the fourth Thursday of the month. And exciting, I think, for Christine last time, adult, adult monthly cracking time the third Tuesday of the month, so next Tuesday, along with fiber club every Tuesday of the month, for those that like to, is that mid crochet, and that, I don't do those things, so. Yes, all of the fiber things. Um, native plant giveaway is March third again. Been working with a couple vendors, one of them's giving her a little lot of trouble, so it might be the last native plant giveaway at the library, you might want to get yours now. World War Two presentations sound pretty amazing, May eighth and tenth, they'll be the same presentation with the same man, but different times, so the eighth is going to be during the day, and the tenth at night, so that more people can attend. Other things, I think she's been going to, and the, uh, library Facebook page has been more active, with someone in the library posting every day, and posting a couple times a week on other sites, like, like the actual library website. That's all she's got.
Thanks, Amy. Mark?
So, just a couple things, Chamber Annual Banco was here the third, Beth the next. So just a couple things, Chamber Annual Bank was April third, Beth and I attended. Carrie, I don't know if you have any, that was very successful, great turnout.
Thank you. Our largest, largest bank that we've had, so we had a hundred and ninety attendees.
Awesome.
Very good. Um, I've been looking at managed IT services with Kim, um, that being Whitley, because we feel like we're paying a lot. And so we have two visits from two different other managed IT companies coming up next week. So we hope to get some comparative numbers that way. Um, and we're supposed to meet, I believe, the following week with Whitley to sit down, that kind of a come to Jesus meeting.
Who are the other tubes, Mark?
StarTech from Red Wing.
Yep.
And CIT from the twenty-sixties. StarTech does Pillar Bank.
They do?
Yes.
They do the fire department stuff too?
Well, they do, and I bet, yeah, we'll see what the cost is, but, yeah, they sound like they're very, pretty good, maybe not quite as expensive, so. CIT, on the other hand, I think is a lot like Whitley, but we'll see when it comes back. Uh, we talked about the comp plan update, um, I'm gonna start working on that. Eric's gonna give me some numbers and I'm gonna do some outreach in the next couple of months, kinda looking at twenty twenty-six. The last one was done in twenty twenty-two just for, um, if that question's coming quite a bit.
It was an internal one, not an emergency, because the board didn't really wanna spend any money.
Yeah.
Basically, when it came down to, so she kinda threw whatever together, but an official one. Fifteen, ten, two thousand and ten, right, is what we kinda figured out for a comp plan or something?
I thought sixteen.
Sixteen, I thought. But it was a while ago. And we need something that really not only looks at what we have, but looks beyond, you know, beyond what we've already got, so. Another thing I'm getting a quote for is another monitor up here. AGES came out two weeks ago, so these, there'd be a monitor similar to that behind us so the audience could see it, they'd be tied together.
It looks really like it's a little production screen.
Yes, it is. I didn't realize there was a screen there either till AGES guy, and I went, oh, I like, oh, there's a screen there.
You guys actually stare at the flag, that's good, I'm glad you're there. Figured that people would be staring at that screen and thinking, not the flag, they did pledge allegiance.
Oh, no, I look at the flag, I've never seen it until I look up, and it, Mark said right now.
And last but not least, um, we sold our house and we're planning on moving way closer May twenty-third. Spring back.
You got the month right. You told me October earlier, I don't know if you're reading.
I'm sorry. I don't know why October, there must be some factor.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
Well, one final thing we have. Mr. Douglas Newton, last getting to the Village of Valmont right now, unless you decide to come back some other time, but
No, I don't think.
I think, uh, you were elected back in nineteen ninety-nine.
Wow, my God.
Twenty-seven years.
I feel ninety-seven, but I. Did you find it?
Oh, it's fine, fine.
Oh, well, how many years did you put in, you remember?
No. Let's not follow the polls, I'd wanna say thirty years.
Thirty years. Well, we're basically thirty years, Doug, so, um, on behalf of the village, Jody went out of her way here to present you with the recognized Doug Newton for twenty-eight years of service as a village trustee, nineteen ninety-seven to twenty twenty-five.
Oh, very good.
So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate all the time and effort and phone calls and.
I miss you a whole lot, just one day I came to my house once, really pissed off.
Really? Hey, you have anything to say?
Oh, it's, uh, it's been a learning experience.
Well, we definitely appreciate you putting in all that time and effort for the village for all those years.
And it's changed. Like I said, it was a Gary at fourteen hundred, now it's four.
Fourteen hundred.
People.
Yeah, fourteen hundred, now we're at forty-three hundred, probably closer to forty-five, so.
So I wanted to stand on the corner in the morning, campaign.
Give a who, vote for new. All right, thanks, Douglas.
Well, thank you, gang.
Meeting's over. Yep, we got the grubs, no, we got the cake for you, we even got the good stuff, it's not so bad for the guy, maybe.